All right. Last one, so you need to be one of us. We are four attackers. They are here. July 20th.
Hi. I'm the states of America. Your republic. Yes.
All last week, I couldn't do karaoke because I was losing my voice and still not back yet. So officially canceling next all this week's appearances. Thank you. All right. Public comment. Would anyone like to address the school committee? If so, just your name for the record, please. Once again, the last time. Okay. Thank you. I will read the Leominster School Committee statement. Committee represents the needs of all Leominster public school students and places their interests above all others. We will exercise leadership, adhere to our protocols and base our decision upon a reasoned assessment of all available information. We will advocate for each of our schools and support high quality public education in Leominster. All right. Now move on to communications superintendent. Do we have any communications? And how about a student report? Do we have students' reports?
All right. So first off, I want to thank all the janitors and the first responders here in Leominster for the flood that we had September 11th, just about a month ago, for cleaning up the schools, getting them ready for kids to get back in. I know that especially the janitors in the school, they don't get enough recognition, especially by the student body. So on behalf of them, I want to say thank you. In school news, this week at Leominster High Spirit Week is occurring for the week with different themes for every day, ending with school spirit on Friday. The homecoming football game will be Friday, October 6th, while the homecoming dance is scheduled to take place on October 14th. SAT tests are going to be taken at the high school this Saturday, October 7th, while PSAT tests will occur on October 14th. This Wednesday, two students from Leominster High School will be going to Harvard University for a book award breakfast. Those students are Rahim Rashid and Mario Howlett. This Friday, there will be a library card drive in the media center by the Leominster Public Library during school hours. Class rings are still being sold to sophomores. That will be ending soon. And then the college fair will be held on October 17th in the Wooden Gym here at the high school. When it comes to clubs, all clubs at the high school are up and running and they've all elected their officers for the year. And then Student Council will be running class elections for the upcoming freshman student body. And then elections are most likely to be held at the end of October. When it comes to sports at the high school, third division two Leominster Field Hockey, whose record is six and one, will play Wachusett at home tonight at seven. So pretty soon. Girls volleyball, who's ranked 39th in Division Two, will play Fitchburg tomorrow at 5:15. They currently have a record of four and four. Actually, that's wrong. Leominster girls soccer will play Westboro tomorrow at Doyle at 4 o'clock, while boys' soccer will play Westboro on October 6th at Doyle Field. Leominster football just received their first win Friday night against Westford Academy. The score was 21 to 13. They play Peabody this Friday at Doyle Field. And then adding on to football, the student body is very excited Thanksgiving Day game, which will be held at Fenway Park on Wednesday, the day before Thanksgiving. So as a football player, as a senior, as a captain, very excited to go play my last football game. That's all.
All right. To start off with plumbing and carpentry students have been working hard ever since the floods to repair the wings. They've been stinking out drains over 100 feet and they added in turbine and electronics. Health assistance students are securing their co-op placements now at Benchmark Assistant Living in Manor on the Hill. And over 39 students are currently out on co-op, all are juniors and seniors. And our most recent addition is a plumbing student who will be working at Mark Lower's Plumbing and Heating. And Auto Collision is now working on two full scale paint jobs. And I think the best news of all, Appleseed Restaurant will finally be opening on October 24th with meals all day. After all this, we will be finally be opening up their business.
All right. Thank you. Any questions? Thank you for coming. All right. Well, now move on to superintendent's report. Oh. Was somebody on? And I missed them. I'm sorry. Go ahead, just your name, please. Is there somebody on the phone waiting or online? Okay. We will wait. Well, we've got to get more information. No matter how many times I post the information about how to get tickets for the game, it's just not getting out there because people keep asking me like, where do I go to get tickets? We just assume one post on Facebook goes the universe and it just doesn't. But people don't read it now, they'll read it later. All right. Have we made connection yet? Ah. Well, you're welcome to interrupt. How's that? If we're onto something else, let's do the superintendent's report and when we finish that, we'll go back and see if they're ready. How's that? Okay.
Huge thank you. Sullivan and Elliot Butch Nato, who were on 24 hours a day, four days, making sure that everything was up and running, checking in. They've made sure to get all the bills to Cityside for approximately $2,000 damages. See if I see a man. Fine. It's on. Okay. So thank you for bringing that up. The infected areas, it's not interrupting instruction. It's just more of a nuisance and we want to get these projects done. So I'll give you an update as soon as those are all done. We have LPAC Family Fund Back to School Night up here at the high school and that's on October 5th from 6:30 to 8 o'clock if anyone is available. That email went out for a second time today to all family and staff. It's in three different languages. So hopefully we have a nice turnout. We had a nice turnout in the spring and it seemed to go very well. We've just completed all except for our pre-K and kindergarten priest building, all our open houses. Very well attended. Parking lots were extremely full. So we're glad to get this year finally off and running now that it's October. Time is moving. And our safety drop starts tomorrow at Northwest with the elementary. Students that don't get off the bus for some reason, or a bus driver doesn't feel that the person taking them off the bus, it's appropriate. So that safety drop begins tomorrow and we have a person on site there that you can contact with family. They will have to come over to Northwest and pick up their children from there. We'll just understand what the circumstances were so the bus drivers feel a little bit better the next time around. And then last but not least, we have a long weekend ahead of us. There's no school on Monday, the ninth. And just so you're planning ahead, there's a half day of school on the 18th. And in the afternoon is professional development for staff.
All right. Did we reach Kyle? Did we reach somebody on there? They don't want to speak. Okay. Thank you. At least they're watching, right? Steve, did we ever find out if we can get this in other languages? Because there seems to be a lot of people watching from home. And let's find out because this is like an, you know, it's a high end program. They should have it in multiple languages for the closed caption, I suspect. Yep. All right. Well, it's a big company that owns the software, right? It's not a small company. So they own it? Well, if they can't do it, we're in trouble. All right. Thank you. All right. Now we're going to move on to presentations and discussions.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
You do have some information in your pocket. What you're receiving now has a little more information. Also, sometimes it's easier to flip through a smaller set of documents instead of the big packet that you have. Again, I'm Laureen Sapola. Most of us, most of us are, have been on friendly terms for a long time. And Renee, Renee Koska is here with us as well. She's going to just help me by taking down any notes or any additional questions that we may not have answers to tonight. And we'll make sure that we get them back to Superintendent Deacon for you all. So the accountability results were out about 10 days ago now. And just going to give you a little bit of a brief overview. It's been a few years since we've had some accountability data. We've had some breaks in the M-CAS results and some breaks in what we're doing as far as the state reporting to us. So the first slide that you'll see or the first sheet that you see is what's posted on the Desi website and what's out there for Leominster as far as Massachusetts is concerned. And the biggest component on here is at the very bottom where it says that Leominster is making progress toward their improvement targets. And we are at the 54th percentile, which puts us in a category of having substantial progress towards targets on our M-CAS and other accountability data that's collected. We're going to talk a little bit about that. Before we get to us in Leominster, I'll just let you know that at the state level, the Commissioner of Education has said that the 2023 ELA and mathematics results indicate that we have stopped the slide in student academic achievement and recovery is well underway. I will look at you, Mr. Thomas, to say that we are not yet back at pre-pandemic levels, but we are, we're working towards that. So no, there's still significant gains that we need to make in order to do that. I've had that question a couple of years and I, I may retire soon, but I'm hoping to be able to say at some point that we are back where we were. So we are working hard towards that.
What's it? So compared to other systems, other urban communities, where are they? Are they, any of them back yet in comparison? Okay.
Across the state, they are not. We are right in the middle of the.
So we're all kind of inching our way towards pre-COVID levels.
Some trends at the state level, fourth and fifth grade seem to be making some good gains. We did see the same type of gain for our fifth graders in Leominster and ELA and mathematics. So we've let our middle school staff and administrators know that we've sent them a strong sixth grade class and ready for them to continue to move them forward. One of the things that the state has asked us to do is to really be very careful with our second, third graders. Those are students who may have missed preschool and part of kindergarten and part of first grade. So the biggest disruption in their early childhood education. They're now just coming into the years that we can assess them in third grade. So we were given a little bit of a heads up. Please make sure that we're very cautious about doing whatever we can to work on their improvement. So those were just some pieces at the state level. The next slide that you see is a definition. We do have two areas of, of data that comes from the state for our accountability. The first one is criterion referenced. The way that I like to think about that is it's how we compare ourselves to ourselves. So we were in a certain place with a variety of data points in the past few years and the criterion referenced results tell us how we're doing compared against Leominster in the past. So compared to ourselves. The second is norm referenced, and that's how we're compared to other districts throughout the state that are in the same grade spans that we are. So the criterion referenced talks about achievement, talks about growth, high school completion, that EL progress, advanced coursework completion for 11th and 12th graders and chronic absenteeism. So the, the next slide, thanks Renee, criterion reference points awarded. There's a whole lot of numbers on this screen, but really what I'd just like to draw your attention to is that Leominster receives points for grades three through eight and then another set of points for our high school, which is really grades nine and 10. And we also at the grades three through eight receive points on the lowest performing students. At the high school, we do not at this time because there isn't a cohort that has had M-CAS for grade seven, eight, and then 10 in order to have that lowest performing students. But when that does come around again, we will have that. So as you see, they're broken out and we can get anywhere from one to four points in all these categories. Some achievement and then student growth. Those are all based on M-CAS scores. The next page are additional measures. At the high school, it's the graduation rate and then it's the five year graduation rate and they call that high school completion. For our Ls, it's how many of our students attain their yearly goals. So progress toward attaining EL proficiency, English language proficiency. And then the additional indicators for all grades, it's chronic absenteeism, which we did talk about last year, and advanced coursework. So while if you see with Leominster scored all the points they possibly could have for chronic absenteeism, we still are not happy with those percentages. And the building administration and teachers are working again diligently to have our students get it in school. We need them here in school with us so that we can make sure that they're learned. So the last page of the accountability sheet for the district, a lot of percentages on here. Just want to bring your attention to the fact that again, we have a breakdown of all students, three, three through eight, lowest performing students, three through eight, all students in grades nine and 10. And that overall, two thirds of our score comes from the grades three to eight and one third comes from the high school. So they really passed it out based on the number of students. Questions on that?
So grade 10 is at 46%. It's an increase of 9%. Right?
Oh, you're ahead of me.
I know.
Mr. Mayor. Yes, they are.
That one, that thing you have on the screen over there, that's the same thing as on this one over here, right?
Yes.
There's no change in the numbers. Am I right?
So the grades three through eight in Leominster are at the 68th percentile for the criterion reference. That means they're, they've made substantial gains in improving over last year and the year before. The high school, grades nine and 10, the high school level, so that's all three of our high schools is at 29th percentile. Then when you do that weighting that I was discussing, that's how our district has gotten to 54%.
Question that I would have. So I don't see the correlation between progress towards improvement targets and accountability percentile. Should those things be related? So for Johnny Appleseed, they've made 53% progress towards improvement, but they're 59th on accountability percentile. Francis Drake has made 73% progress towards improvement. They're 42nd. So if the progress, if the accountability percentile is a measurement of progress towards improvement targets, then those things should be related, right?
So the accountability is the norm reference piece. That's how we are compared to other grade three through eight schools. The first piece, which is the progress toward improvement targets, that's how the school did for themselves compared to where they were before. So that's where like Francis Drake made substantial gains from last year to this year.
The percentage would be higher.
Right? But they are still lower than many other districts in the state that have students in grades three through eight.
It's because the improvement was so substantial, the percentage rose up, but still the accountability percentile is still not.
I just don't, what I don't understand is like Northwest, long page now. I believe Northwest was around the same number as they were this year. How have they made 70% progress when they're still at 31%? Excuse me?
Asking questions without them. I'm, I was, I'm flattered for them. Hopefully she can answer those questions.
Go ahead. I mean, what's the question? So.
I don't know.
So let me, I could just go to this page for a minute. The, the definition for the norm referenced is the accountability percentile compares Northwest, for an example, against all other schools that have students in grades three through eight across the state. The criterion reference measures Northwest to where they were on all of those measures. So M-CAS and growth and chronic absenteeism and the, the ability of the Ls to meet their gains. So the first, and now I will move to the next screen, talking, this is the screen that you are on now. They, I might have been better served putting this on two different pieces of paper because they are very different and the, the two columns are not, cannot be compared. Criterion reference cannot be compared to norm referenced. I will say Northwest was at the 18th percentile for accountability last year. And they are now at the 31st. They made significant gains from where they were and they made significant gains from where they were on the criterion referenced or all of those points that they could get. They are still though below the, many of the districts in the state as far as our scaled score for M-CAS in ELA and math and our student growth percentile. The, their Ls did very well. So the, the two different categories that, I'm not sure, does that help?
Yeah, I think I need to digest them more.
Okay.
When you say, like for example, I mean, you know, for Northwest, you said last year their accountability, accountability percentile was what?
18.
18. And now it's 31.
Correct.
So that's a jump of, I'm not a mathematician and I don't even pretend to be one.
13.
Okay.
13 percentile points.
Now, here's the dirty question. What do you projected to be for next year? Can you make, can, can, can you make some projections? Is it available? Can you do it? No? Yes? Because it's going to be a different set of people, the different set of kids.
It's a different set of kids. I will say that we don't necessarily spend a lot of time on that accountability percentile because that's comparing us to other states, other schools in the state. And we don't have a lot of control over that. But the criterion reference, so the first column, progress toward improvement targets, the state's going to give us those improvement targets relatively soon. So we're going to know where we need to get to and we're monitoring our students' progress towards those. So we are keeping track of that first column and helping our schools to, to understand where they may need to put additional services, what students they might need to work with. They also tell us who they've identified as the lowest performing students. So those are the students that are most at risk at that school and we'll know them.
Didn't you say that you were told that there was a group of kids that were high performing or stronger coming in?
So we know in Leominster by looking at our M-CAS and our growth scores, that fifth grade moving out of elementary into middle school had some very strong results.
So are you going to exploit them to get better grades?
We're going to move them even further because we know where they're at and we know that they can move further. So that's why we've let, along with knowing about the high risk students, we want our teachers to know about the high achieving students and who's sitting in their seats in September.
Well, are you going to put an asterisk saying because we knew that these kids were high performing, they may have changed the, 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 the centile from what the graph said could happen to what may happen?
Well, we.
Am I making this up?
We try to personalize all of our instruction and that's what we're trying to get to. And knowing this information gives us the opportunity to educate our teachers and they, and as soon as we can, we do so that they will know who the children are in front of them, what their, what their growth could be, what they might have for, for special needs, what areas of concern we might have, as well as what areas have they already mastered.
So basically to summarize it, so make sure, because somebody may look at this and think 72, well, great, we're doing 72. 72% isn't bad at all. In fact, wish I got those marks while I was in school. So 72% is the amount that they've improved. So you could be at 30 and get an increase. 30 isn't good, but if you, 72% or a 73% increase is obviously progressing towards what the overall target is. So it's not, you're getting a, you know, a B or s. Right. So, but then the accountability percentile is really what the numbers that we're looking at. So if you're at one and you got two, that's a hundred percent increase, but that doesn't, that doesn't show the progress. That doesn't show your actual increase, like where everybody's at. And then it's the other column is comparing everybody. So I think what, what I think Greg was trying to get to is how do we know where we stand? We know what the percentage increase is and accountability percentile on everybody. If, if last year's score was X, do I have to minus 72% to figure it out? Or do we know what, do we, there should be another column showing last year where we're at. And then, you know what I'm saying? I think it would just help because percentages can work in all different ways, right? Yeah. Don't make it a lot of work. Just, I think real simple, cut and paste kind of thing.
Thank you. And then another slide, the accountability.
That's what, that's what would help. I think for me at least, is that, that sounds logical.
Getting a little fancy for me there. Yes.
You can do it. It's changed man.
We'll certainly get that to the superintendent.
I had a question. So this, this encompassed grades three, five, so as I mentioned, the group testing, a very real possibility that next year, these numbers could slide a little bit and then we're going to have to do a little.
I don't, I, I don't think we're going to expect that in Leominster. We have spent an awful lot of our time and effort on quality research-based curriculum products from pre-K and K and one. Those have been in place for ELA. We do progress monitoring with an assessment, it's called DIBELS, and we do other assessments. So I think we have a pretty good understanding of where our students are. Now, we have certainly had our kindergarten students and our kindergarten teachers say we've had to do a whole lot more, but we do believe, and if you see it and you have your own children, at that age, they're sponges. And so if we can get the really high quality materials into the hands of our great teachers, we're going to be thinking that those students are going to be, they're going to do just fine.
Go ahead. Question. Go ahead, question.
We're still analyzing that. And they'll make a note for me. We will certainly bring information, um, some of their, the missed points on, on a couple of the accountability areas.
So maybe, yes. Do we have any of the subgroup data for ELL kids or, um, kids on IEPs?
Uh, the subgroup data is available. Um, I will say that the, the criterion reference points, um, the one that's on the second page in purple, that's the progress towards attaining our English language proficiency at the grades three through eight. We scored three points out of four, unfortunately, at the high school level, which is very complicated um, as far as language acquisition and students in a variety of different places. We did not, uh, we did not get points. So that's something else that we're looking at. Yes, that is very complicated. At the early elementary and up through fifth grade, our students are learning English. All of our students are learning English, but at the high school level, i- it's tricky. It's tricky.
So in here somewhere, I think at the end of the day, at least what I was looking for is, does it show, A, where we're supposed to be and then where each school and the breakdown of each school group, like you have broken down there, is that here somewhere? I don't see that in here. That's what's important. So we can look at individual groups and then compare them against the school. And last year, I think we did this and it was at Fall Brook that we were like, or trying to figure out why they did so well, but maybe Northwest didn't so so well. Remember that conversation last year? So I don't see that in here. Is that here and I'm just missing it? And I don't know necessarily means anything, but just to compare it with ourselves, in other words, from school to school. And then last year, we were like, well, let's go back and find out why one school did so well. Let's, you know, was it a fluke or was there something going on in there that we can use it in other schools? Kind of peer-to-peer. But does that sound like a reasonable request? I think that, I, I get all this now. You did a great job explaining that. I don't know if I can explain this to, to a parent. Um, I'd have to come get you. Um, but-
You're doing a lot.
Right. And, and you know it well, but I'm just saying, I think the broad data for us, the, you know, the conclusion is this is where we ought to be and here's where we're at. So we know, um, and then if it's, I don't know if it's available in the same way, broken down by six to eight, three to five, grade ten. And you explained at the very beginning that, hey, remember, some of these kids have had a little piece of the first few years of learning. Take that in consideration, but at least we can see where we're at. Is there anything on that, on that end that you looked at from that data that you could tell us tonight? Is there anything that jumps out?
It's a lot of different, it's a lot of moving parts.
Yeah, okay.
And so what we have seen is some, some growth in areas and then some areas of concern at different schools with different subgroups. So we look at, uh, obviously we look at our Ls, we look at special education students, we look at Hispanic students and Black students.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, and so we are, and then we look at a, a high-need student who might be one or more of those, um, risk groups.
Right.
And each of the schools do break that information down and we provide it for them so that-
The demographics between schools might be different. We know that as much if we try to equalize them and, and it might be different, that might be-
That's absolutely the case, yeah.
Right, okay. That makes sense. This is all good. I understand. This is state talk. Those are those people that sit in a bunker somewhere making up this MCAS stuff that's gonna make us all, I don't know why, but at the end of the day, you know, we have that, that software in place where we can monitor where a student is almost by day. And so it must be frustrating to, for a teacher to be looking at that. And how do you, you got twenty-five, thirty kids in the class sometimes? How do you take that student, bring them up? And then I know we have additional resources for them, but I would suspect it shows up here somewhere. Maybe you already explained in one of my year, that percentage of student proficient, grade six to eight, it slid one percent.
So I actually hadn't gotten to that.
Oh, okay. I saw that. I said, I must have lost it. I must have missed it.
Nope. And to, to the, to the mayor's point, um, this is one data point, but it is the state accountability system. And so we look at this for trends among grade levels, um, among schools, among subgroups. But our teachers have a variety of assessment tools. And as you mentioned, some of the tools that personalize their learning. Those are data points that they live with all the time.
Right.
The, this, um, we do have that information I was providing at a higher level. We, the teachers know about this, but they spend a whole lot more time on Johnny's ELA test from last week.
They individualized it. We're looking at broad data here. But it just helps us to understand from year to year.
Sure.
Kind of where we're at. It could look like we're doing better. It could look like in some cases we're not, but it actually could be doing better. But then when you compare it against a particular school somewhere else that is doing better in one category, doesn't take down the rest of the, the data, so.
And, and based on accountability.
Yep.
Most of our schools are considered to have made substantial progress toward their target.
That's good information.
And that's the state's, um, labels, for lack of a better term. And it was a label that we were looking to achieve.
That we're, say that one more time so everybody can hear it.
So that we are at subs- we-
Substantial increase.
Majority of our students have, right, they have improved. Substantial progress toward target is the label from the state.
Okay.
We have a couple that made moderate, moderate progress, but they all made progress towards their targets based on the, the state's accountabilities.
I know I could get it out of you.
Um, and just the last quick.
Yes.
Um, one of the other things that we do look at and our teachers look at with administrators is the percent of our students that are proficient on MCAS. So that means the number of students who have either met or exceeded on MCAS. And that's, it's still a, um, a hurdle that they need to get over in order to get a diploma. So that's important for us to look at. We need to get our students to proficiency. In ELA, as you see on this slide, um, we've made slight increases, a little bit of dip in grade six to eight, but a one percent, so we're not, um, we're still moving forward in most cases. Grade ten, um, they got a pat on the back. Um, they had some good gains as far as the number of students who met or exceeded. Again, we're in a state of flux, so the last couple of years of MCAS may not be a true indicator. Um, to your point, I think we need to go a couple more years now forward to really see a trend. This is a one-year increase or a slight decrease. And then in mathematics, um, we did a slight increase for our, the district and the lower grade levels. Had a little bit of a dip in tenth grade that could have been an implementation dip. The teachers have taken on a, a new program which is conceptually based. It's wonderful for the students, but it was a heck of a lot of work and they did that work last year and we're gonna see some results from this year. Just to let you know, the last couple of slides are just about the state and how we did have, I just wanna go to the last one for me. But there's been a break in this reporting and what they've, what they've provided us with. So we are now back, starting on, on track to be getting some good trend data going forward.
Yeah, it'll be interesting to see if somebody was at thirty-six percent at, can you go back one slide? So your, your, your group we were most concerned with is actually the highest at forty-three percent. Those are ones you said the state's watching, so they've actually at forty-three percent. It'll be interesting when they reach the six to eight. It's gonna take a few years here, but to see whether, see where they're at. I mean, that's really the, the key. And, and at some point, there should be substantial improvement, I would suspect. After coming out of the whole cohort and adding all the resources. That was the, their brains are like sponges group, right? So they, they did all right. Fourth, right, but then they go to take the MCAS, they're at forty-three percent.
Yes.
Proficient, right. I understand that a lot better. Any questions? Thank you.
Paula, we're just gonna move that title. Just needs to be read into the right. Yes, so a requirement of our federal title, title grant is provided that the school committee with knowledge of any waivers. Leominster Public Schools has applied for an ESA Ed Flex Program waiver for twenty-three, twenty-four school year. And it has been accepted.
Okay. Thank you. All right, now we'll move on to the update on the LCE building.
To the, to date, a building for lease has been identified. We had a committee come together over the summer. Uh, Sal was on that committee as well. And we are hopeful in the next few days to have a contract signed. But this evening, I would really appreciate a motion to accept this property, which is on the corner of Johnson and Lancaster Street. This will house LCE. It will house, uh, cur- now it's empowered ed, correct? And now we have a virtual school as well. It's a two-floor building, downstairs has six classrooms, cafeteria, offices, nurses room. That will be the hub for the LCE students. Upstairs, there are four classrooms that will host all virtual learning. We have one of the principals here today on bended knee, hoping that we will approve the five-year lease. We looked at the finances. Um, I am hoping that the mayor will sign off on this. I will not. And we will move forward. There, there is no build-out cost associated, associated with this property. Mel has done a forecasting on the rent. The rent on day one is the exact same at the end of year five. Does not go up at all. And we feel very confident that this is the right move for LCE and the Leominster Academy.
Second. Any questions at all? Ron?
No, no, I don't have any questions.
Okay. Just checking. All right, all in favor? Those opposed? All right.
Beautiful. Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Oh, yeah? Well, how about the pre-street playground presentation? Trying to take the thunder away from the pre-street school playground project? You know, when I was a kid.
Good evening, everyone.
Like street hawk in the street.
Excited to have this opportunity to present our playground design for pre-street school. As you may be aware, pre-street houses eight kindergarten classrooms. We are thrilled to be a part of the planning of an inclusive, interactive and safe play area. For all of our young learners will have the chance to explore and use imaginative, imaginative play. Playground should be safe spaces where kids develop crucial physical, social and emotional skills necessary to gain self-confidence, improve coordination and advance critical thinking capability. In the planning stages, we met with our consultant, Colin. Together, we discussed and incorporated many attributes that would ensure that our playground included developmentally appropriate components that would accommodate all learners, such as climbing walls designed for young children, xylophone and other musical instruments to create a sensory-rich experience, bridges that would allow our young learners to learn how to balance and plan for their next step, as well as a tracker system where students can explore a zip line experience. The key for us was to have spaces and places for our students so that they could both use their physical body as well as their imagination. Additionally, in this design, we were able to extend the play landscape to include swings of varying types as we currently have some outdated playground structures located to the left of the current play area. With this project, those old structures would be taken down and we will have new swings of varying types, including a two-person friendship swing, which will allow our students to sit and face, face-to-face with a buddy while swinging. Well-designed playgrounds encourage friendships between different groups of children, which promotes awareness and acceptance of diversity throughout the school as well as the community. And it is our hope that our new playground will do just that for our young students at pre-street.
Book.
I have a question.
Yes, Josh.
I have, I have a, I have a question.
I have a question.
Yeah.
Um, I have it on good authority that there's a high concentration of dinosaur bones on that property.
Yes.
And before we consider any sort of motion or anything like that, um, do we have your word that those dinosaur bones will be treated with the utmost seriousness and maybe have a little bit of ceremony?
Of course, those, those are well-preserved. We'll still have our dinosaur bones for our dinosaur dig and our paleontologists will be out there excavating in the spring. So that's all in the plan.
Playground should be a lesson to us all. Just leave the kids alone. They all get along. It's us parents.
True.
We have the problem.
In that case, I suggest we move the, uh, action item to right now and just make-
We need, we need two motions. One is to approve this project. And the second one Melanie is going to- did not do was hold back on this design. We need another motion.
Have to pay for it? Melanie? You're here to bring? Bring it. I know somebody that lives, I know, I know somebody that lives around the corner. Sal. You know that built-in pool you have at your house is, we'll leave it off and slide right in.
I'll make a book.
Thank you.
All right, so we have a motion to approve the project itself. All in favor, the significant financial manner that was opposed. And now we, now that we have the money, no, now we need the money.
Seven thousand, two hundred and one dollars. So we need to pay, a hundred and fifty thousand of that is allowed to be paid out of a general fund. But a hundred and forty-seven thousand, two hundred and one dollars needs to be spent out of school. Which is where we have paid for the other two playground portions that were above and beyond a hundred and fifty.
And I, I move to accept it.
All right, so a motion to second. Any other questions, comments? If not, all in favor? Those opposed? Thank you.
That's wonderful.
Thanks. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
If only we had an MCAS on the playground. Everyone, everyone be a hundred percent proficient. What do you got? You got something else? You wanna do warrants while you're here? No, we could do warrants right now. All right, approval in a minutes.
Minutes.
All right, we have motion to approve the minutes. There's a second, there's a second. Byaleen, any questions or comments, errors, omissions? Everything look good? All in favor? Those opposed? Thank you. We'll now move on to warrants.
Make a motion to approve the following warrants. Warrant seven totals four hundred and thirty-five thousand, four hundred and ninety-three dollars and sixty-one cents. Warrant eight totals two million, three hundred and twenty thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars and seven cents. Warrant nine totals a hundred and ninety-seven thousand, two hundred and five, uh, twenty-seven cents. Warrant ten totals two million, seven hundred and sixty-five thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars and eighty-seven cents. Warrant eleven totals seven hundred and sixty-two thousand, seven hundred and thirty-nine dollars and nineteen cents. Warrant twelve totals two million, seven hundred and ninety-five thousand, five hundred and seventy-eight dollars and thirty-eight cents. From grants revolving, we have warrant several, seven totaling ninety-nine thousand, eight hundred and seventy dollars and thirty-three cents. Warrant eight totaling two hundred and twenty-nine thousand, three hundred and forty-four dollars and forty-three cents. Warrant nine totaling twenty-three thousand, eight hundred and twenty-eight dollars and sixty cents. Warrant ten totaling two hundred and sixty-two thousand, two hundred and ninety-eight dollars and ninety-one cents. Warrant eleven totaling six hundred and thirty thousand, sixty-four dollars and forty-three cents. And warrant twelve totaling four hundred and eighty-five thousand, five hundred and eleven dollars and eight cents.
All right, you're in the recommendation. Anyone wanna make the second? Second, all right. Any questions or comments? Melanie, anything you wanna add?
I get to the last, uh, action item for myself. I just, if anybody has any questions on finance.
All right, let's take a vote then. I don't know if you have anything you want to add. All in favor? Those opposed? Okay, thank you. Yes.
Just asking that we up to ten thousand dollars to any expenses that come through for prior year. Doesn't mean we're gonna spend it, but I do have a couple of bills that I do need to-
It's only ten thousand. Oh, oh, while you can. Vote, vote while you can. Vote while you can. Second. All right. Thank you. All right. You voted? Okay. Anything on the new or old business? I think we've done the vote on Pre-Street, the waiver, vote on LCE. Anything on the new or old business other than-
That keeps getting brought by attention, just bus safety.
Yes.
That sheriff, is anything that, um, explain what they do? I know the police have been involved, uh, getting involved with that if there's some-
So that, my discussions with the chief are that they investigate every time there's a complaint. They have cameras. So they investigate. Um, the other issue seems to be, and we're just trying to find those, that sometimes bus drivers will activate the lights before they get to the stop. And I think that's like an advanced warning. And somebody may be coming, the bus is still moving and somebody is, that doesn't, so it's a, it's, I don't know the law is meant so that the bus driver turns the lights on and goes down ten houses and the person that passes the bus may be coming the other way. Is it violation? That's what we're trying to ascertain. I think it's when the bus stops, turns the lights on, you know, stop sign comes out. So we're trying to, but I think the bus drivers are trying to let people know in advance. But that's causing some confusion out there as to whether or not supposed to, well, they'll come the other way. Coming the other way. Or they stop and then somebody crashes into them behind them because somebody gets, so anybody that, so especially on the rare end, there are cameras. And if anybody makes a report, then uh, they report it to the police department and the traffic department will investigate them all. But we want people to stop. Right? Anything else? All right. We also, uh, met in discussion, uh, on the superintendent's contract. She is favorable. Go ahead. Does anybody wanna make a motion? And that's really, so that everybody understands, based on last year's, last year's. So it's not the forthcoming year. Correct. All right. Is there a second on that? All right. All in favor? All right. Thank you. And one last thing. Uh, the superintendent, when we had the floods, there's one phone call to the superintendent and she took that whole chunk of schools and everything that was related to it communicating. And it was a huge relief to us because we had so many issues, more than we, when the sun came up or it didn't come up, on the next day, it was worse. And superintendent did a great job just handling that whole thing. We got kids in for a couple of days, pot. And there are parents worried that, you know, they weren't gonna be able to get to work and, but that went, everybody, the whole team, just everything went so smoothly. So stats at the top, superintendent, thank you. That was good. Well done. Thank you. It's a great team effort. Believe me, it's a whole lot of people from other agencies, just, sometimes when you gather those phone numbers in here, oof, what a difference when they answer. Yep. A lot of people reached out. Yes. All right. Anything else? Beat Peabody. Can you do that for us? Peabody? It's always a bone of contention with them. It's just, yeah, oh, no, no question. But if, if you can beat them, it's like a big deal. All right? That's all I'm gonna tell you. It's like a big deal. All right. Motion to adjourn. Second, all in favor? Thank you to our students for representing. It's always nice to see you. Go Blue. Go Big Blue. George.